Twenty twenty-three, the council briefing meeting will come to order. The time is two P M. Council President Juarez and Council Member Tammy Morales are excused from today's meeting. I am Sarah Nelson, Council President Pro Tem. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Muscata.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Sawan.
Present.
Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Councilmember Herple. Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Council Pro Tem, Council President Pro Tem Nelson.
Present.
Six present.
Thank you very much.
And I do see, I'm sorry, I do see Council Member Herple, so seven present.
Perfect, thank you. All right, if there's no objection, the minutes of March twenty, of April third, twenty twenty-three will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the minutes are adopted. All right, President's report. On today's agenda, we will again welcome O I R Director Gail Tarleton and staff to provide a state legislative update. O I R is providing a series of weekly presentations until the end of the legislative session, which is at the end of April. Following the state legislative update, we have two proclamations to sign today. For the first, Councilmember Muscata will speak to a proclamation for signature honoring the work of Sajil Parikh. And then Councilmember Herple has brought a proclamation recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. You all should have received a copy of each of those proclamations last week for your review. Following the proclamations, we'll then have individual reports by each council member. So on tomorrow's agenda, we have no executive sessions today. On tomorrow's agenda, the consent calendar will include the minutes and the payment of bills. We'll take one vote on all items on the consented, on the consent calendar unless any council member wishes to remove an item for consideration separately. And if so, that item will be taken up at the end of the agenda. There is one item under committee reports on the agenda tomorrow. The appointment of Derek D. Wheeler Smith as Director of the Seattle Office for Civil Rights. This appointment was recommended by the Neighborhoods Education and Civil Rights and Culture Committee. And the Chair of that committee, Councilmember Morales, is excused from tomorrow's meetings. So Councilmember Lewis will speak to the committee's recommendation that the City Council confirm that appointment. Information on all of these items on tomorrow's agenda is available online. Okay, with that, we welcome O I R Director Gail Tarleton and staff to provide a state legislative update. Welcome, O I R, take it away.
Thank you so much, Council President Pro Tem Nelson and all the members of the City Council. Well, we are in the final stretch of the legislative session, which is scheduled to end on time, April twenty-third. And so now is the time that is known as budget season. And all of you are familiar with that here in the city, at the state legislature. It's the House and the Senate have both introduced both of their budgets and know the governor's budget that was introduced last year. Now the committees are reviewing all of the proposals for the various operating capital and transportation budgets and and negotiating to figure out a single budget. So today, we're going to focus on budgets, which is something that has tremendous impact not only on the city, but our region and state for a lot of key investment areas. And Samir Janay Joe, our State Relations Director, will begin the presentation today. And Anna Johnson will sum up, or maybe they'll finish in a tag team as our state legislative liaison. So Samir, I'll hand it over to you. And and I want to thank Samir and Anna, with all of you council members. They have been literally working long, long weeks and weekends to keep up with what is happening in the legislature. And we're hoping it has a positive impact for the city. So Samir.
Great. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Samir Janay Joe, State Relations Director for the City of Seattle for O I R. And so as mentioned, this is, budget season is happening right now. Many budgets were released in the last two weeks. Currently, there are two more days of fiscal committees. And so the final cutoff for fiscal days will be tomorrow. And then after that will be exclusively floor action, minus some budget revenue bills. So today's briefing, all you get are the highlights of various budgets proposals that have come out, operating capital and transportation. If you have any questions about bills, which are still very fluid, they're, they are on your council bulletin. And I'm also happy to take any questions at the end of the briefing about, about any legislation that you are curious about. So I'll first go over the Senate proposed budgets. The Senate operating budget on comes to housing, spent a total of five hundred and eighty million dollars on housing programs. And this includes one hundred and twenty million for transitioning those living in encampments on state right of ways for housing. And also includes one hundred and eleven million dollars to maintain or increase emergency housing and shelter capacity. And it also includes ninety-three million dollars for grants to support operations and maintenance costs for permanent supportive housing. In addition, there's a thirty-two million dollars for grant to local governments to maintain their programs that were impacted by the loss of document recording fees. On public safety issues, the Senate operating budget included funding for the resentencing implementations of State v Blake. That was eleven million dollars provided for assisting municipal courts and prosecutors and defense councils and resentencing impacted by the Blake decision. And also fifty-one million to the Administrative Office of the Courts to operate a centralized statewide legal financial obligations refund bureau. There's also funding for basic law enforcement training. It's the, the Senate operating budget funds twenty-three classes in both twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, with at least, with at least three of them in Spokane each year. And four additional training classes each year and two other, two regional locations. There's also quite a lot of funding on healthcare and behavioral health. Twenty-three million for behavioral health crisis outreach and diversion. There's also implementation of the State v Blake bill, fifty-five thirty-six. So that includes fifty-five million dollars for substance use programs and fifteen for grants to therapeutic courts. There's also funding to cities to reimburse the cost of alternative response team programs, four million dollars. There's also funding for Department of Commerce to develop model ordinance for cities to utilize for citing community-based behavioral health facilities. On the workforce end of the stage, there's eighty-four million dollars to increase behavioral health provider rates by seven percent. And then also there's fifteen million dollars to protect access to reproductive healthcare and to support clinics for experiencing an influx of out-of-state patients. And also twenty million for a program to support immigrants who lack healthcare insurance. There's also funding in all of these budgets for climate and environment coming from the Climate Commitment Account revenues. In the Senate operating budget, there's two hundred and eighteen million for carbon sequestration on farm greenhouse gas reductions, repairing restoration coastal hazard assistance, flooding reductions. There's also money, one hundred and forty-five million dollars for utility assistance for low-income families, reducing the carbon footprint of state-owned facilities and access to energy audits. There's also money, seventy-five million dollars to help people increase their utility efficiencies through free assessments and grant programs to make weatherization upgrades and install electric heat pumps. There's also one hundred and twenty-six million to help transition heavy-duty trucks to clean energy. Also increase air quality monitoring, methane capture, and also support workers toward affected by climate change. Last thing, there's also ninety-six million for large-scale solar projects. On education, there's the Senate operating included three hundred and sixteen million dollars in new spending to support special education services. And also one hundred and six to help expand early childhood education and assistance programs. Lastly, the state shared revenues, the Senate operating fully funds all shared revenues at anticipated levels. Moving to the capital budget, Senate proposed capital budget. It funds four hundred million dollars for the Public Works Assistance Account. And also funds fifty million for State Broadband Office as a federal grant match for the broadband equity access and deployment state grants programs. On housing, the Senate capital budget also funds four hundred million dollars to the Housing Trust Fund. Sixty-seven million for the Housing Finance Commission's land acquisition program. And also fifty million dollars grants to match private investments for transit-oriented development. As mentioned earlier, this Senate capital budget also includes Climate Commitment Act money, includes three hundred and nineteen million dollars raised by those auctions to make investments in environmental protection, clean energy transition, and protecting communities who are disproportionately affected by pollution. The last Senate budget is the Senate Transportation Budget. It funded one billion dollars for Fish Passage. It also funded two hundred and eighty-seven million dollars, the Transportation Improvement Board, which includes things like the Complete Streets Grants and also nine million in preservation funding for cities. Seventy, there's also seventy-two million dollars for pedestrian and bicycle safety grants. Forty-four million for Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board, which includes implementation of a truck parking action plan. There's also funding, seventy million dollars for Safe Routes to Schools Grant. And eleven million for Clean Alternative Fuel Vehicle Charging and Refueling Infrastructure. And the Senate Transportation Budget also included a seven million dollar e-bike rebate program, which includes two million for e-bike lending library and ownership program competitive grants. There's also a study for the Joint Transportation Commi- Commission to convene a study of a statewide retail delivery fee on orders of taxable retail items delivered by motor vehicles within the state. And lastly, two million dollars for grants to local jurisdictions to implement network-wide traffic conflict screening programs using video analytics.
All right, and I'm going to go over the proposed house budgets, starting with the House Operating Budget. In terms of housing, they proposed one hundred and seventy-four million for emergency housing and rental assistance. One hundred and fifty for Covenant Home Ownership Program. This is House Bill fourteen seventy-four, if it passes. One hundred and fifty million to transition those living in encampments to safer housing. And one hundred and twenty of that one hundred and fifty million is to be used for those living on state rights of way. One hundred and thirty million for the HEN program. Twenty, or fifty-two million for homeless service contracts. Fifty-two million for grants to support operations and maintenance costs for permanent supportive housing. And forty-four million for grants to local government to maintain programs impacted by the loss of the document reporting fees. The House Operating Budget also made room for the Governor's Bond Referendum. This is a four billion dollar housing bond authority, but this is also included in a House Bill. This is House Bill eleven forty-nine, and this must be moved through the legislature and then to the voters if included in the final budget. In terms of public safety, similar to the Senate, the House included eleven point five million dollars for resentencing implementation for State v Blake. And also similar to the Senate, they included fifty-four, fifty-one point four million dollars for the Administrative Office of the Courts for the LFO refund bureau. The House Operating Budget includes funds for twenty-three basic law enforcement training classes for both twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. And with at least three classes in Spokane, but in, and also includes six additional training classes in three regional locations. For behavioral health and healthcare, there is ninety-eight million dollars for behavioral health crisis outreach and diversion programs. And four million dollars for grants to cities to reimburse the cost of alternative response team programs. The House Operating includes a three hundred and forty-four million dollar increase for behavioral health providers. This is a fifty, fifteen percent rate increase for those providers. They also include sixty-eight million dollars for increased rates for healthcare workers, which is targeting the primary care and pediatricians. They also include one hundred and fifty-six million for patient transitions out of acute care hospitals. Ninety-nine million for healthcare for undocumented adults. And seventeen million to fund reproductive healthcare services and security measures. In terms of education, the House Operating Budget includes one hundred and seventy-nine million to increase funding for supports for special education students. Eighty-five million to expand free school meals. Eighty-two million to expand early childhood education and assistance program slots and also increase rates. In terms of climate and environment, the House Operating Budget spent three hundred and sixteen million in the Climate Commitment Act investments. Forty-five million for forest health and wildfire protection and twenty-five million for biodiversity protection. The Capitol, House Capital Budget includes four hundred million for the Public Works Assistance Account. One hundred and fifty million for broadband. And also makes additional investments in affordable housing construction and other housing needs. And that includes four hundred million for the Housing Trust Fund. But fifty million for grants to match private investment for transit-oriented development, which is similar to the Senate proposed budget. Seventy-five million for connecting housing to infrastructure or chip grants to local government. Forty million for the Housing Finance Commission Land Acquisition Program. One hundred and ninety-eight million for electric heat pumps for low-income households and small businesses. The House Capital Budget funds sixty million for the Clean Energy Fund. Forty million for projects that are in the hard-to-decarbonize sectors. And twenty million for solar and energy efficiency grants to public buildings. The House Transportation Budget includes one billion for state and local fish culverts. And seven hundred and twenty-eight million for the Washington State ferries to decarbonize. This is funding for three vessels to be converted to hybrid electric. And the funding of construction to start five new hybrid electric vessels. The House Transportation Budget also includes one hundred and fifty million for zero emission commercial vehicle infrastructure incentive program. Forty-eight million for zero emission school buses, shore power, drayage pilots, public transit electrification, hydrogen refueling, and other E V infrastructure. Of the Transit Investments Board funding, there is thirty-three point seven million dollars for the Complete Streets Grant Program. There is also seventy point nine million for Safe Reps to School Grants. Seventy-two point two million for pedestrian and bicycle safety programs and grants. And finally, there is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the city's share of the fuel tax revenue for the Joint Transportation Committee to convene a study of a statewide retail delivery fee. That is the highlights of all of the six proposed budgets. It's not exhaustive, and we sent you the A W C matrix that includes a lot more that we didn't cover today. But I also did want to highlight a few of our city-specific budget requests and where they're landing in each of the House and Senate budgets. So one thing that the city was really supportive of this year is including money for capital funds to redevelop Memorial Stadium. This is a local community project in the thirty-sixth Legislative District. The Governor's Budget included four million heading into session. And we also saw that the Senate proposed budget included four million as well. Additionally, the city is really supportive of Early Learning Capitals Fund for the U D O B Rainier Valley Early Learning Campus. This is an early learning campus that's co-located transit-oriented development, childhood and education space that's going to be cited at the same place as an affordable housing project through the City of Seattle. We saw that they funded that at six million dollars in the Senate Capital Budget and two million in the House Capital Budget. Finally, another big request of ours is a recycling producer responsibility study. This proviso is to conduct a recycling rate study and in a community engagement process. The Senate included five hundred thousand for this, and the House included four hundred thousand. And finally, we just wanted to update you on another development in terms of revenue for our budgets. On March twenty-fourth, the Washington State Supreme Court decision upheld that the capital gains tax that was passed in the legislature in twenty twenty-one was constitutional and a valid excise tax. So this decision helped budget writers move forward because the revenue forecast and the Senate budgets both assumed the capital gains tax was constitutional. And they incorporated, incorporated those revenues into the budget. The Department of Revenue is beginning the implementation of the tax in February, or they began the implementation of the tax in February. And the tax deadline is April eighteenth for the capital gains. And that is the end of our briefing today, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you, O I R Staff and Director Tarleton. I see that Councilmember Herple, you have your hand up, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I have a question about the four public safety-related bills that didn't make the cutoff. I see that for one of the bills, House Bill fifty-four seventy-seven, there is another bill that made the cutoff, Senate Bill eleven seventy-seven, addressing recommendations related to murdered and missing indigenous women. But for the other three bills, could you just briefly remind us, one's drug testing equipment, the other one's law enforcement application pool, and the third is law enforcement employment eligibility? Is there, are there other bills that make it through the cutoff that we're seeking to accomplish similar goals?
Yeah, I'll try to answer this question as best I can, and then I'll probably follow up with some more information. For House Bill ten oh six, this is the Drug Testing Equipment Bill. We'll likely see incorporated in Senate Bill fifty-five thirty-six, the Drug Possession Bill. Similar provisions around drug testing equipment and the decriminalization of those drug testing equipment. So I imagine that is part of the reason why that one did not move forward. As far as House Bill thirteen eighty-seven, which is regarding a law enforcement application pool. I believe this one landed in a place where it included mostly a study. So perhaps that's something that could show up in the budget, but it was a bill that was working on recruitment and retention for law enforcement officers. And then House Bill fifteen thirty, this is expanding eligibility for the law enforcement application, law enforcement eligibility. This was also a workforce bill, and I'm not quite sure what ended up happening with this. And I'm not sure if it'll be incorporated in other bills, but I can check on that and get back to you.
Thank you so much. And then one last question in the public safety realm. I know that we did not flag this in our legislative agenda. And so apologize for not doing what I should have done to make sure that we're tracking this more carefully. But the catalytic converter bill is, did that make it through?
I believe it's still allowed because it is in the fiscal committee. And I'll, I'll check back after the cutoff tomorrow evening and check and see if it's still moving along.
Very good, thank you so much.
Is there anybody else? Well, seeing no other comments, I just have some good news, which is that, let's see, I believe it was, just a second, I'm looking for this. Senate Bill fifty-one ninety-nine, providing tax relief for newspaper publishers and prime sponsored by Senator Mullet, passed out of the Senate last week, forty-seven to one. And I understand the bill will now be referred to the House Finance Committee, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, well, please be sure to keep me apprised of dates. Councilmember Strauss, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Just again, thank you to the O I R team for your weekly briefings offline. I know I don't ask a lot of questions here during council briefing, and that is because you spend the time needed ahead of my work, especially with A W C. So just wanted to share my appreciation, thank you all.
All right, if that is all that we've got, thank you very much, O I R Staff. I'll let you go, fight the good fight.
Thank you so much, Council President Pro Tem. And thank you all, and there will be a lot happening this week. So we'll look forward to giving you information as it comes up. And please don't hesitate to call any one of us. And we'll do what we can to keep up with the rate of change in Olympia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. All right, Councilmember Muscata has a proclamation recognizing April sixth, twenty twenty-three to be Sajil Parikh Day in the City of Seattle for signature. Councilmember Muscata, please lead the discussion on the proclamation for any additional feedback before I request signatures to be affixed to it. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Council President Pro Tem Nelson. Colleagues, I'm, I'm excited to bring to you a proclamation to honor the work of our Chief of Staff in my office, Sajil Parikh. And it is also with mixed emotions, but really a lot of excitement and deep appreciation for her, her next steps, and all she's been able to accomplish while working with all of us in the City of Seattle and serving in our office as Chief of Staff. Folks, I mentioned a week and a half ago that we were going to bring to you a proclamation to honor her work. As you know, Sajil has been with my office since twenty eighteen when we first were elected and has come in, and not only have we been able to shake things up, push progressive policy ideas, but we have done so largely thanks to Sajil's incredible tenacity and effort to bring people together, to ensure that diverse opinions were always at the table. And in doing so, really care deeply about stakeholder engagement and policy details. Because of this commitment, we have been able to make history. Seattle continues to be on the map, and Sajil is really a cornerstone behind all of our collective efforts on a council to be able to pass some of these historic policies and to know that it was done so with deep stakeholder engagement and Karen attention to the policy details. I think we can collectively thank Sajil for her work with the city. It has been an honor and a privilege personally to be able to work alongside Sajil. I don't know if folks know, she both has a J D and an engineering degree. So I used to call her Engineer Attorney, Sajil Parikh. But really, the, 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 the experience that you've all have had with working with her, to see her talents firsthand, her strategic mind, the way in which she works with folks, and her moral compass to ensure that we're constantly pushing a policy agenda that improves the lives and livelihoods for our most vulnerable. It's been an incredible benefit to not only our office, but the entire city, our residents, our, our small businesses, and the community at large. I wanted to, before Council President turning it over to you, to ask for some signatures, just call attention to some of these important wins. If I might take a little bit longer here.
Please do.
Thank you so much. So probably at the embarrassment of Sajil, who I hope is watching and able to celebrate all of these wins with us. I'm going to start in twenty eighteen, and I'm just going to rattle some things off. Twenty eighteen, she was the mastermind behind helping to craft and finalize the legislation, behind banning subminimum wage, behind the Domestic Workers Bill of Rights, our first city in the entire nation to pass wage and safety protections for domestic workers. In twenty nineteen, led the effort that is now historic and constantly pointed to by our human service providers to ensure that there was a cost of living adjustment for human service providers and ensure greater wage stabilization. Led on the passage of hotel worker protections, including maximum workload, retaliation protection, safety in the workplace, and healthcare, guaranteed access to healthcare. She helped us craft and finalize the policy on paid leave after the loss of a child, which our own city policies did not have during the time of bereavement. And really, really thankful for that incredible work, along with spearheading items in the budget in twenty nineteen, when I was on parental leave to leave for our office and has continued to do so over the last three years that I've been budget chair, pushing transparency, accountability, improving the, the ways in which we monitor revenue sources to ensure that they are staying true to what the voters have voted for or what the council has codified and statute. In twenty twenty, she was immediately out the door with our team, helping to pull together the Jumpstart Progressive Payroll Tax Coalition of Labor Community, Transit Green New Deal, and Small Business Owners, led on long-term economic recovery details with central staff to get those coronavirus local relief funds and American Rescue Plan Act funds out the door. And then we amended legislation, which Sajil had a hand in crafting to expand paid sick leave for workers who needed access to the safe leave component if their place of care for their kiddo or their elderly parent was closing down to unsafe health conditions. We expanded paid sick leave to ensure those gig economy drivers had temporary protections, which we all just celebrated last week, putting into statute. In twenty twenty-one, hazard pay, childcare payments and support, small business grants, human service provider pay yet again, adding five point three million dollars in one-time funding for that cost of living increase in the budget and cash assistance for workers. This is something that we are so proud of in our office. Sajil really led on twenty-five million dollars to help directly get funding into the hands of workers. And in twenty twenty-two, helped to finalize the work on our cannabis equity workforce development that continues to evolve along with restoring the human service provider pay in the budget and prevented austerity. This, in addition to the news that was celebrated across the nation for guaranteed paid sick and safe leave for gig workers and the ongoing work that she will continue to leave as a legacy on the Revenue Stabilization Task Force. I know our city is in a healthier, safer, more equitable place with greater accountability and greater transparency provisions built into our budgeting process, thanks to her work. So our, on behalf of our entire team in our office, and really, I think, on behalf of City Hall, we want to thank you, Sajil. In order to do so, colleagues, I hope that you will join us in the mayor's office in signing this proclamation to honor April sixth, Sajil's last day in office as Sajil Parikh Day, and we look forward to celebrating everything that I just noted, in addition to sending her off with well wishes this Thursday. Thank you, thank you, Madam President Pro Tem.
Thank you very much. Are there any of my colleagues or colleagues of Sajil's that would like to speak to this proclamation, add any words? Well, I would like to take the opportunity then to add that on behalf of my staff, I thank Sajil for being such a proactive and responsive communicator with Well, I would like to take the opportunity then to add that on behalf of my staff, I thank Sajal for being such a proactive and responsive communicator with on behalf of Councilmember Muscata's office, and a note from Jeremy, our Chief of Staff, is you've always been quick to respond to our questions, and were a huge help as we collectively navigated our first budget on council. Your professionalism and friendly demeanor will be missed. So, thank you very much. With that, would you, if Councilmember Muscata, do you have any closing words?
No, I will just thank you for those kind comments and your team. Also, appreciated the hurrahs that Councilmember Strauss shared in committee last week, along with Council President Juarez, who sung Sajal's praise as well, as we discussed her departure last week. But thank you all for, for joining me and celebrating not just this individual, but all she's been able to do on behalf of the city.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion on the proclamation, will the clerk please call the role to determine which council members would like their signature affixed to the proclamation recognizing April sixth, twenty twenty-three to be Sajal Pareek Day in the city of Seattle?
Councilmember Muscata?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes, and yea, Sajal.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Council President Protem Nelson?
Aye.
Seven signatures will be affixed.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to Councilmember Herbold's proclamation. Councilmember Herbold has a proclamation recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month for signature. Councilmember Herbold, please lead the discussion on the proclamation for any additional feedback before I request signatures to be affixed to it. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Madam Protem. This afternoon, I'm asking for signatures on a proclamation declaring April to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Seattle. This proclamation was drafted jointly by the Seattle Women's Commission and the Human Services Department, and the mayor is concurring. My office circulated the proclamation to all council offices last Monday. And the theme for this year's Sexual Assault Awareness Month is bind connections, prevention demands equity. And the proclamation calls on all individuals, communities, organizations, and institutions to change ourselves and the system on us to build racial equity and resistance tomorrow. HSD, Human Services Department interim director, Konya Kim, will join us at our full council meeting for an in-person presentation of the proclamation to Seattle Women's Commission members. And if any of my colleagues have comments or questions, I'd love to hear them.
I am not seeing anyone speak up, so thank you very much, Councilmember Herbold. We'll now call the role, please, clerk.
Councilmember Muscata?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Council President Protem Nelson?
Aye.
Seven signatures will be affixed.
All right, seven signatures will be affixed to the proclamation recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. That came before in my script, but I neglected to say it. Thank you very much, Councilmember Herbold. And we'll now move on to our next agenda item, which will be a discussion, a discussion on the preview of city council actions, council and regional committees, and the order of discussion is established by the rotated call, roll call for city council meetings, which is designated alphabetically by last name and with the council president or Protem called last. This week's roll call rotation begins with Councilmember Muscata, followed by Peterson, Sawant, Strauss, Herbold, Lewis, and then Nelson. Councilmember Muscata, please begin, and then hand it on over to Councilmember Peterson. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Council President Protem Nelson. Colleagues, as a reminder, the Finance and Housing Committee meetings are going to be suspended as we continue to deliberate and discuss the these housing levy, which will be in a select levy committee that you all have an opportunity to join twice a month for the next three months with a few extra meetings here and there. This is our chance to really make sure that the council has the chance to dive into the details of the proposed housing levy. And thus, our Finance and Housing Committee meetings will be suspended with the exception of one meeting. Our next Finance and Housing Committee meeting will be on May seventeenth at nine thirty AM, where we will have a preview and a discussion of the revenue forecast in it, in its complete view. Folks might remember that the Forecast Council received a partial overview of the revenue forecast. The items that the Economic and Revenue Forecast Office specifically look at were shared, but we are going to soon be receiving information from the City Budgets Office, where CBO will be filling in the remainder of the details on which revenue streams have seen an increase, possible decrease. And central staff will provide us with an overview of what that means for the health of our city financial situation for the course of twenty twenty-three and our endorsed twenty twenty-four budget. So again, mark your calendars if you're interested in that budget information on May seventeenth. In the meantime, we will begin discussing the housing levy. Thanks so much to the mayor's team who has been working with housing advocates, community, labor stakeholders, and better understanding the ways in which we need to scale up our investments in affordable housing across our city. We have now been able to celebrate the transmittal of the proposed housing levy to council, and this officially, this week officially begins our process where we will begin diving into the why, the what, and the how of the housing levy. On Wednesday this week, April fifth, at nine thirty AM, we will kick off the Select Committee on Housing, and we have two items on our agenda. This includes the current and future housing needs and workforce stabilization needs for briefing and discussion. We will have also a twenty sixteen Housing Levy Programs and Production Report, remembering that we are overproducing, we are over, let's see, what's the right word? We are following through at a higher level than anticipated on our twenty sixteen housing levy, as we want to make sure that folks in the community know that we have been efficient and effective at using those dollars, and we want to show them how that twenty sixteen levy has been put to good use. We have an ambitious schedule for the housing levy to be considered in Seattle City Council chambers. We will have our conversations run April, May, and June, and we anticipate adoption of legislation that would place the housing levy on the ballot for voters this November in twenty twenty-three. I really want to encourage everyone to attend these scheduled meetings. You should have a invite in your calendar already. Thank you to Fari Vicuvas, who is staffing this Select Housing Committee meeting, and we will begin right on time at nine thirty each morning. We also have a handful of public hearing opportunities in addition to our Select Housing Levy deliberations, but we will endeavor to ensure that there's public comment at the beginning of each of those meetings. You also received an overview from me in last week's email exchanges about what to anticipate as part of this process for the Select Housing Committee. If you have any questions, please be sure to reach out to me or Erin House, who is Policy Director on our staff and happens to also be lead on everything housing. So it's a perfect opportunity for us to get you connected to all the information you, you need. As part of the Select Housing Committee's work, we will review the current and future housing needs, consider the executive's proposal, including the size and scope of the levy, and we will deliberate and make final decisions on whether or not we change anything, and we will then send that levy off to the voters for their consideration. I also wanted to remind folks that this is going to be an opportunity for us to hear from members of the community. We will hear from central staff as well as our city team, our city family from the Office of Housing as well. But all of the presenters will continue to remain remote to try to reduce the number of people in the physical space in the room. And you will have the opportunity for a hybrid participation. Whatever you, you choose to do is welcome from me. I will be there in chambers with my mask on, and of course, if you're able to come, fantastic. Would just encourage us to all to continue to follow the public health recommendations around masking and safe, social distancing. Just want to proactively thank all of you for the work you've doing. I know that this comes in addition to all of your existing committee work. None of that work goes on hold like it does for the Select Budget Committee, so thank you for participating in the Select Housing Levy Committee. And thanks again to the mayor's office, central staff, my team, Erin House, and Sajal, and the, the work that has been done with the broad coalition of labor and business and housing folks who have been able to put together this initial proposal for our deliberations and consideration. It's, it's an exciting moment in Seattle's history to be able to respond to the most pressing crisis in our, in our city, in our region, and across the West Coast and across the country with levy that Seattle initially led on in twenty sixteen and continues to have an opportunity to do so here. Madam President, I just have two more items for the group's consideration here. Sorry, that was a little lengthy about the housing levy, but important details, given that there's a distinction between my committee and the Select Committee. Thank you. Okay, so folks, just one more, one more proclamation coming your way. I wanted to flag for you that later this week, we will be circulating a proclamation for your consideration. This has been requested on behalf of many of the folks in the Cambodian community. They have asked that the city of Seattle recognize April seventeenth as Cambodian Genocide Day of Remembrance. April seventeenth is the forty-eighth anniversary to the date of the genocide that occurred in Cambodia, which resulted in approximately two million people, which is nearly a quarter of the entire Cambodian population losing their lives. In Seattle and throughout King County, we are home to the third largest population of Cambodian Americans in the United States, and I want to thank Samith Mel, who many of you probably have worked with in the past, who is a Cambodian-American community leader and the Director of Partners in Change, a BIPOC-led coalition that serves across the city and try, or across the state in trying to ensure that more BIPOC issues are being raised. He has reached out to our office in partnership with the Cambodian-American Community Council of Washington, Kumar Language Arts Academy, the Kumar Anti Desporthation Advocacy Group, the Equity and Education Partners in Change, and the Kumar Buddhist Society, as well as Svi and Rajah, who have asked that we put this in front of you for your consideration. Again, we will circulate this for your consideration to consider April seventeenth Cambodian Genocide Day of Remembrance, and a proclamation would then be offered to the community mid-April. Lastly, I know many people probably will be speaking about this, and I just wanted to add my name to the list of community members who are heartbroken and outraged to hear of the death of Elijah Lewis, a longtime community activist described as a pillar of the Black community. At only the age of twenty-three, he was gunned down, and his work with Afriktown Community Land Trust widely acknowledged for the incredible work that he's done to be able to bring community organizations together. Folks have described him as a law, a loving and loyal friend, son, brother, and uncle. And as his family mourns, I know that the city of Seattle, in addition to mourning the tragedy of his life being taken far too early, we again, and I, commit to making sure that we remove guns from our community that has led to this tragic loss for his family and for our entire community, sending our condolences and commitment to action to the family of Elijah Lewis. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, and if there are no questions or comments, I know that the order is to be passed to Councilmember Peterson, but I've just been asked if Councilmember Herbold can go first because she has to leave a bit early. Councilmember Peterson, do you, is that all right with you?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I think, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. I have RPC at three o'clock, so thank you so much. I will do what I can to make it quick. There are items on the full council agenda tomorrow include two appointments approved by the Public Safety and Human Services Committee on the consent calendar. One is a council reappointment to the Community Police Commission, and the other is a council appointment to the Public Safety Civil Service Commission. The Public Safety and Human Services Committee does not meet this week. The next meeting will be on April eleventh. As Councilmember Muscata mentioned, this weekend, we learned of another heartbreaking and completely senseless story of gun violence when a child was wounded in Capitol Hill and a cherished community member, Elijah Lewis, was murdered. I thank Chief Diaz, the Seattle Police Department, and all of the other first responders involved in their quick response. I think the community member who reportedly also assisted Elijah is recognized by his community as a protector, and he certainly was a protector in his last moments of life in protecting his young nephew from gunfire. I know we will all continue to work, to call on our state lawmakers to push forward on common sense gun safety regulations to protect Seattle residents and the rest of the state. And also, as we invest in gun violence prevention efforts across the city and King County, I know many of us have been involved in testifying in favor of two of the bills that our good OIR colleagues have been working on that are looking like they are going to make it across the finish line this year. In later news, this weekend, Station Thirty-Seven stood hundreds of families at the Seattle Fire Department's Fire Safety Fair, including Storytime from Keith Goggins, fire safety education, and a core of facilities, including ladder thirteen, a resource as saved by the city council in the last adopted budget. Also, CSCC, the Community Safety Communication Center, will be at the nine-one-one Washington State Recruitment Event on Saturday, April fifteenth in Tacoma. All of our public safety departments are working really hard on recruitment and staffing up their departments and reports to the council via myself as the public safety chair. Really proud that the CSCC is doing such great work in recruitment and staffing, and their hiring plans have been able to drastically reduce the wait call times as residents seek emergency services. Moving on to public health, last week, multiple healthcare facilities in our region announced they will continue requiring mask-wearing in patient care in public areas. This is a voluntary agreement signed by major local healthcare systems. Their statement reads in part, "The decision is timely as the region continues to face a burden within the healthcare system, and the risk for severe disease associated with infection among vulnerable populations is ongoing." And our own Public Health Seattle, King County, issued a statement in support of this continued voluntary masking requirement. At the March meeting of the Board of Health, we heard testimony from many, many medically fragile in immunocompromised residents advocating for this continued masking. So I'm really grateful for the leadership of our public healthcare advisors in ensuring that, in the words of Dr. Chutzen, "No one should get preventable infection because they need to seek healthcare." On the HSD front, the Human Services Department is reminding us that anyone who's still working to get their taxes completed by April eighteenth, there is free tax help available for folks earning less than eighty thousand dollars last year, and the Seattle Public Libraries are offering this tax help. For regional committees, this afternoon, I will be attending the Regional Policy Committee as an alternate and voting on legislation that would submit a ballot opposition to renew the county's Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services Levy for the voters for their approval. In order to participate in the Regional Policy Committee, I will not be able to attend this afternoon's Park District Board meeting. And then lastly, just highlighting a few events. Last week, I had an opportunity to attend the Soto Business Improvement Area Team and Safe Meeting to discuss public safety concerns in the Soto area with the BIA rate payers there, including residents of the Sunny Arms Artist Co-op. Upcoming this week, already this morning, Councilmember Lewis and I met with gig workers who shared with us their stories and personal experiences around unfair platform deactivations. Our offices are continuing our work with central staff, gig worker stakeholders, and the Office of Labor Standards to build regulations ensuring more responsive and equitable working conditions. And then later this week, I'll be meeting with community members who have organized themselves like many of our legislative districts apparently have into a thirty-fourth district environmental policy caucus. We're meeting on Tuesday evening to hear their concerns with the city's progress on the building emissions performance standards legislation. That's all from me. Thank you. I'll take any questions or comments. And not seeing any, pass on to Councilmember Peterson. Thank you.
Actually, I do believe that there has been another request to, to have Councilmember Sawant speak next, because she also has to leave early, so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for your grace, Councilmember Peterson. Go ahead, Councilmember Sawant.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, and Council-
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, and Council President Protam Nelson. Good afternoon, everyone. There are no items on tomorrow's City Council agenda from the Sustainability and Renters' Rights Committee. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the committee is this Friday, April seventh at nine thirty a.m. That committee will discuss and vote on the legislation to cap late fees for renters at ten dollars a month, which my office is bringing forward alongside renters' rights activists, union members, Stay Healthy Coalition, and Socialist Alternative. As I have noted before, renters do not get paid late fees when their landlords delay fixing broken appliances, heating, or mold infestations, yet renters have to pay rent on time regardless of whether their landlord completed repairs. The late fees bill was discussed at the last two meetings of the committee and is now ready for a vote. As was discussed at the last committee meeting, there's an amendment clarifying language about notice fees being prohibited that required a title change. So that amended version is on to tomorrow's introduction and referral calendar, but I wanted to be clear, it is the same bill substantively and nothing new. I urge councilmembers to stand against any amendment that would water down the bill or make it less effective as a protection for renters. And if councilmembers do intend to propose an amendment, please let my office know right away so we can include that on the agenda and so that it's not a surprise to members of the public, specifically to the majority renters in our city. We will be putting out the agenda on Wednesday, so we would need any amendments by then. And I also wanted to join in expressing condolences at the really tragic passing away of Elijah Lewis in the Central District, who's been, who was a community activist in the Central District. Condolences to their family and friends and all the fellow activists in the Africa Town community. And also just wanted to give my apologies for the Parks Committee that is coming up because I also have to attend the Regional Policy Committee alongside Councilmember Herbold. Thank you. And I pass it to Councilmember Peterson unless there are any questions or comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Thank you, Council President Protam Nelson. Good afternoon, colleagues. There are no items from the Transportation and Seattle Public Utilities Committee on the full council agenda tomorrow afternoon. Our next meeting of the Transportation and Seattle Public Utilities Committee will be tomorrow, Tuesday, April four, at nine thirty a.m. We have four items on our committee. That's four items for you on four-four. Specifically, these four pieces of legislation. There are three from Seattle Public Utilities, one from SDOT. We hope to vote all four of them out of committee tomorrow. Council Bill One Two Zero Five Three Nine from Seattle Public Utilities will improve our climate, or our city's climate resiliency by authorizing the acquisition of a small piece of land in an area that often floods in northeast Seattle. Council Bill One Two Zero Five Three Eight will authorize Seattle Public Utilities to enter into an inter-local agreement to resolve a dispute with King County over how to allocate the work and money from the residuals. That's what's left over from recycling. I'm relieved that we'll be able to dispose of that matter without any trash talk between the two local governments. Then we will hear, for the third time, Resolution Three Two Zero Eight Two, which will adopt updated plans from Seattle Public Utilities to reduce solid waste. I want to thank Councilmember Herbold for working to make SPU's legislation more specific and accountable with her friendly amendment that we will vote on tomorrow. The fourth item is Council Bill One Two Zero Five Two Eight, which will authorize our Seattle Department of Transportation to acquire a tiny sliver of strategically-located property to facilitate the Route Forty-four bus transit corridor. Regarding regional committees, last week, I attended the King County Flood Control District Advisory Committee where we received an update on their twenty-twenty-three budget. That concludes my report. Any questions before we hand it over to Councilmember Strauss? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. You had some good puns there. From the Land Use Committee, there are no items from the Land Use Committee on tomorrow's full agenda. We do have a Land Use Committee this week. It is a special meeting on Friday, April seventh, from two p.m. to four p.m. I apologize for having a committee on a Friday afternoon. It was the only time we could find. We are, again, only hearing the tree legislation in this meeting. Specifically, we're going to do a deep dive into the tiers of tree categorizations, the replacement and in lieu fees, the budget allocations needed to complete this work, and the central staff analysis. Please remember that amendments are due to central staff by next Tuesday, April eleventh, so that central staff has time to review with law before bringing them back to our committee. This is really intended to give us additional time upfront to highlight what are the big issues before the committee regarding this tree protection ordinance. This April eleventh Amendment deadline provides us the opportunity to make sure that all of the amendments are in concert with each other, and then also provides us the opportunity to ensure that there are no other cleanup fixes or technical amendments. Clearly, amendments will be, are allowed all the way to the last date. This April eleventh deadline is a request to move up the big policy conversations sooner and upfront. We also have a committee meeting on Friday, April twenty-first. We have a public hearing on Monday, April twenty-fourth. We have our regularly-scheduled Land Use Committee meeting on April twenty-sixth. These meetings will all solely focus on the tree protection ordinance before us, before we move on to other topics. Thank you, colleagues. That is my report. Colleagues, do you have any questions about the Land Use Committee? We really only have one tree, or one bill before us. Seeing none, Councilmember Herbold has already gone. So then, Councilmember Lewis, you're up next.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Strauss. Hello, colleagues. Immediately following council briefing today, we are going to go into a meeting of the Metropolitan Parks District Board. This will occur at the same time, unfortunately, as the Regional Policy Committee meeting, where the consideration of a recommendation on renewal of the Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services Levy will be heard. Councilmember Sawant, as she indicates, indicated in her report, sits on that committee and will, of course, be excused from the Metropolitan Park District Board meeting. And I want to thank Councilmember Herbold, as she indicated in her remarks, for attending the Regional Policy Committee as my alternate, so that I may chair the Parks, the previously long-scheduled Parks District Board meeting. And Councilmember Herbold will, of course, be excused from that board meeting as well. So don't change the dial to transition to the Metropolitan Park District and a little bit of foreshadowing for what we will be gabbling into after briefing. Members of the viewing public will be able to watch that meeting of the Metropolitan Park District Board right after this council briefing on Seattle Channel. We will consider two resolutions and have two presentations from Parks. The first resolution will be a technical change correcting the meeting date for a later meeting of the Metropolitan Park District. The second resolution amends the bylaws of the Seattle Park District to modify the rules regarding voting on park district resolutions so that they are more consistent with the rules that govern Seattle City Council votes generally. Then, the Parks Department will give us a report on the proposed performance measurements for the second cycle of the levy. This was a requested component in the resolutions that we passed relating to the Metropolitan Park District last fall to have the Parks Department come back and present performance metrics that were identified as areas of interest for the council. So this will be our first opportunity to provide feedback on assessing and setting the metrics. Finally, we will have a briefing on park ranger hiring, training, and activities. Tomorrow, we are going to consider the nomination of Derek Wheeler Smith, appointed by Mayor Harrell to serve as the Director of the Office of Civil Rights. Mr. Wheeler Smith's recommendation was unanimously approved by the Neighborhoods Education, Civil Rights, and Culture Committee, chaired by Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Morales will be absent from council tomorrow afternoon and asked that I move the nomination, and I am happy to do so. So expect me to essentially provide the committee report on that nomination and look forward to confirming the nominee, Derek Wheeler Smith. On Wednesday, the Public Assets and Home Assistance Committee will meet to consider the appointment of AP Diaz, Mayor Harrell's nominee to serve as Superintendent of the Department of Parks and Recreation. Thank you to colleagues who have submitted questions and have received written responses from the nominee. We look forward to further vetting the nomination and considering the nomination of AP Diaz this coming Wednesday. Clean City numbers for March twentieth to twenty-fourth. Between March twentieth and twenty-fourth, the Clean City Initiative recovered one hundred and ninety-nine needles at sixty-five different locations, along with two hundred and twenty-nine thousand pounds of garbage. And that's the the update from the Clean City Initiative. Seattle Public Library's short-story dispensers, which supply on-demand printed short stories at two locations, will now be featured throughout the library system. Seattle Public Library wanted different regions and communities to be able to experience what these dispensers have to offer. And since the installation of these dispensers in twenty-twenty, over fifteen thousand stories have been printed and enjoyed by patrons. Starting March twenty-ninth, a dispenser formerly housed at the Station Coffee Shop will now be at the Fremont Branch until the end of May. And with that, colleagues, I do not have anything else to report on and will hand it, I believe at this point, to Council President Protam Nelson.
That sure does roll off the tongue, doesn't it? Thank you very much. So, report from the Economic Development Technology and City Light Committee. Last week, council unanimously passed three resolutions to kickstart the process of reauthorizing the Metropolitan Improvement District, which is a business improvement area in downtown Seattle managed by the Downtown Seattle Association. And two of those resolutions set a public hearing on April twelfth, the first of two committee meetings that will spend considering the ordinance reauthorizing the mid. So we had to move quickly because these resolutions came fairly quickly and sort of late in the game, and I just have to extend a thank you to our clerk staff because they had to get them in the mail and sent to all ratepayers because they set that public hearing date. So thank you very much for getting that in the mail, and that will be on the twelfth. Just a heads up to anybody who wants to listen into that. Also, on the agenda for that next meeting is, I'm really excited about this, we will be considering appointments to the Seattle Film Commission. So that's a, that's a head, that's a look down the road. Tomorrow, there is one item from the Economic Development Technology and City Light Committee, which is Clerk File Three One Four Five Two Zero. It's on the consent agenda. It's requested by the Office of the Inspector General and would modify OIG's Surveillance Usage Review Schedule for eight SPD Surveillance Technologies that council approved use of in twenty-twenty-one. So just some background, the Seattle Municipal Code provides that OIG should conduct a Surveillance Usage Review, or SUR, of SPD's use of those technologies annually. And unfortunately, working through the first cycle of reviews took longer than expected, and so OIG, due to staffing constraints, hasn't been able to meet its initial deadlines. However, in the last year, OIG has hired two FTEs dedicated solely to this work and has worked closely with consultants and is currently drafting and engaging with stakeholders. So this file modifies the reporting schedules for the respective twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two SURs on three of the eight technologies, and for the other five technologies, it allows OIG to combine the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two SURs. So the bottom line is that OIG would be required to complete all twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two SURs for all of the SPD technologies by September twenty-twenty-three. So that is on the consent agenda tomorrow. Just wanted to give a heads up. And because we are short of time, I am going to skip all the meetings and the the events that I attended last week and simply say that if there is no other business before us right now, this will conclude the the council briefing for April third, twenty-twenty-three. And just a reminder, we move right into a Metropolitan Parks District meeting. Seeing no other business, it is three oh six p.m., and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.